Mr. Gibson?
Here.
Doctor, is that Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Crisco?
Here.
Mr. Bizani?
Here.
Mr. Nakosia?
Here.
You have a quorum.
At this time, I want to ask if we stand and join Mr. Hudson as he lead us into our vacation and our pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, as we gather here tonight, praise your name. Please protect the citizens of Gloucester and the first responders of Gloucester and the surrounding areas as we approach this storm. The citizens don't need to go anywhere. Please stay home to create less of a havoc for everyone else that needs to respond to them. Heavenly Father, thank you for all. For it's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My knee gets out. I like it. Okay, we're moving on. We'll move to our approval of minutes for December the 3rd, 2024, and January the 7th, 2025.
Motion to second, Mr. Chair.
Moving to second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approval of our consent agenda?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
With the adoption of the agenda, I would like to make the motion that we adopt the agenda while we add Item C, which will be Declaration of a Local Emergency that we can vote on tonight as opposed to having to wait to do it next week or at our next meeting in March. So with that, with that amendment, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay. You go next. All in favor?
Aye.
As I said, yes, sir. At this time, we're going to move on to our consent agenda.
So, motion, second.
Move to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, matters presented by the board. Any matters presented by the board? We did have one thing I wanted to mention. There seemed to be some concern expressed about our video broadcast at our last meeting on February the 4th. And I've asked Ms. Cronin if she would provide us some update information on the broadcast and what went on and what happened. We don't want the citizens to be getting false information in our community.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the opportunity, and I'm going to read comments so that my nerves don't get the better of me. During the last meeting, there was an issue with the video recording. I was on leave on the Thursday and Friday following that meeting, and so it was after my return that I found out about the issue and what was the steps that were taken to resolve that. I understand that there have been concerns amongst some members of the public regarding the missing segment of the video, particularly in relation to the content that was affected, and rumors about multiple copies of the video being posted. I want to assure the members of the Board, the members of the public present, and those who may be watching remotely, that there was absolutely no intention to prevent the broadcast or recording of any public comments at the last meeting. The meeting management software that we use, eScribe, is operated through the laptop at my workstation, and it is an Internet-based program. The device in this position is connected to the county's network and therefore to the Internet. The meeting on February 4th was not the first time we have had an interruption in the Internet connection affecting the program, and I do not anticipate it will be the last. When such interruptions occur, I receive a notification on my screen indicating an error, and I generally stop taking notes as I know any information entered during the disconnection may be lost. Typically, these interruptions are brief, such as what we experienced on February 4th, and I do not take additional steps post-meeting to have backup videos uploaded. There have been longer interruptions. You may have noticed that I'll stop taking notes, or I'll take notes on a notepad. In those situations, I'll ask Mr. Harris to upload the backup recording. It is important to note that this recording is in a different format than what is required by our eScribe program, requiring a conversion, which can take several hours before it can be uploaded and published for viewing. For shorter interruptions, this approach has not in the past proven to be an efficient solution. As for the concern about multiple versions of the video being posted, the county posted two. The first video was the original recording that I captured during the meeting, and I posted that meeting on the Wednesday morning afterwards. The second version was the converted backup video, and that was posted on Friday morning. I want to emphasize that there's nothing confidential about the eScribe program. I encourage any members of the public who are interested to learn more about how our meetings are conducted through this system to reach out to me. While I do not believe I was specifically mentioned in social media comments and other staff members were attributed with the issue, I want to clarify that managing the meeting through this software is my responsibility. And I am in this seat. I welcome any questions regarding that area of oversight being brought to my attention. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thanks for clearing that up for us. County administrative items.
Yes, sir. I want to remind the public that we have a joint meeting with the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors a week from tonight, and hope that the public will pay attention and participate with that as we get into starting our comprehensive plan process, updating for that. And then I would also mention to the public that there is a probably high probability that we will not be open fully all day tomorrow. So if anybody's coming in the afternoon, I would suggest that they make a phone call and find out if we've closed, as well as listen to any announcements. We are opening at 8:00 a.m. unless the weather changes. Thank you.
So when is the snow expected to begin?
There is a 45% chance that it will be snowing at 9:00 a.m. That's about the best, I think, of a specific that I've heard.
Yeah, probably no later than, we're in the 11 to 1 o'clock start time in our area forecasted. The other thing is, our joint meeting is at TC Walker, correct?
At 6:00 o'clock.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Steele. At this time, we'll have public comment period. We ask that you limit your topic to the work session agenda only.
It's on?
It should be on.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of all, Ms. Steele, Mr. Wilmot, Power, Mallory, York District. The Supervisors Retreat opened up to the public, but only attended by yours truly. The rest of the community, too busy to attend, do not have an interest in their government, or do not mind being controlled by the government. A segment of 39,000 were absent. Thus, tonight's on public comments at government meetings, a discussion will be brief on free speech for submission to the Board's various public meetings. Retreat discussion suggestion was to take the call-ins and send them directly to the Supervisors. Sounds good, but the trash can can become full, and in most cases, the citizen is silent. Now, I was halfway agreeing with this concept. Further thinking, wait, if 60 citizens wanted to mail in comments with government concerns, you would be here for three hours, sitting and doodling while the free speak citizens' comments were read. That's excessive, but a 30-minute timeline may be set in place. That is, only 10 citizens. Historically, you may have far less. Mass letters only occur when you step over the line for regulation or specific development. A word processing software program can sort these letters to specific comment and combine. Thus, you only must read the names and follow up with an accurate reading document covering that large group of comment. What's left can be read individually and small packets identifying the callers. Time saved, discussion by you, more concise and acceptable decisions can be made. You control the time. In most cases, the meeting is empty of citizens for public comments or limited to a very few, but nothing comes of their comments. Truth is good for the soul. Public utilities. Gloucester County's water system, established around the late 60s or 70s, has been operating as an enterprise fund for years, sustaining from fees collected, but subsidized by all the county citizens to satisfy debt. Critical to the citizen is the old adage, "He who controls the gold is king." Unquote. Well, the gold was controlled, but the utility is in critical condition. Created by who? The Board of Supervisors. Over time, HRISD has shut down any new construction due to the lack of adequacies to handle pipe, pressure, and pumping capabilities in the courthouse area and other impacted heavy-using areas. Time is my enemy. Recommend after this meeting, you call for two open forums, one at the courthouse, one at Gloucester Point. Start time, 7:00 p.m. Have the people provide you the conditions in their respective areas. This will provide data for a more complete FY26 budget, both operating and capital improvement. My recommended initial debt is $50 million borne by all the citizens to modernize the system. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mallory. Is anyone else would like to have public comment this time?
I just have one thing to say, and I didn't know Trista was going to say what she was saying, but I've mentioned to her earlier today, if you look at your agenda packet, the minute she's doing it from last month, we're caught up on our minutes in a way that both our auditors and other people look at, and I wanted to give her an add a boy in front of everybody that she had done that job.
Thank you, sir. One of the comments, we'll move on to our work session agenda. First up, I'm sorry, oh, excuse me, sir.
Nathan Brown, the Wary District. And since we're going to talk about the subject is utilities, I have a fair amount of knowledge on that. And we've looked at it, there's not a way, you can't raise the rates enough to pay for all the repairs on the utility system. We've been on a consent order, I don't know how long, and the lines for Pump Station 11 run through the swamp, Beaverdale Swamp. They still have trees going on, and we can't get it, we haven't never gotten in to inspect them. And we've told the federal government we're going to fix them. So we have to come up with some other funding source to pay for some of the capital improvements. Some, yes, the rate payers will pay it, and the cost, you know, as everything else, the cost has escalated, but we have escalated rates recently, and they're going to have to go up just to operate the system. And then we're going to have to come up with more money because you've got pump station, you've got pump station lines that have to be replaced, you've got pump stations that have to be replaced. If you go down to Gloucester Point, the water lines in Gloucester Point, well, I can't remember when they put them in, it was either the 60s or 70s. They're falling to pieces. They're undersized. They won't meet fire flows, et cetera. They're going to, most of Gloucester Point is going to have to have all new water lines a piece at a time. We don't have to do it all at one time. You've got to do it, you've got to start replacing water lines there. There's water lines in the corridors that are still galvanized pipe. That's one reason you get people complaining because of the water quality, because of, you know, galvanized pipe rust. They've got to be replaced. So we need, we're going to have to figure a way to come up with money, and all, you can get it all, you can try to raise the rates, but the utility, you know, the utility customers are not going to pay for it. It's just gone on too long. It's going to come, it's going to take injections of money from somewhere else. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else? Anyone else? Okay. Now we'll move on to our work session agenda. Utilities update, lag, correct our public utilities.
So tonight, we're going to delve a little bit more into the budget and some potential funding options. We touched on this a good deal at the retreat. Unfortunately, it was towards the end of the day. We also needed to have a lot more discussion, I think, and you all asked me to come back. So the topics that we're going to touch on today, I am going to leave the permit updates off this time. I fully updated you at the retreat, and I will be back probably in the very near future with additional permit updates. So today, an update on the FY25 budget, the capital projects review, discussion about rate history and where we currently stand, some potential funding options, and some next steps in direction. So FY25, you have seen this before. This has not changed since the retreat. This is a snapshot of FY25 revenue. We budgeted $11 million, and I am projecting $9.9 million. You can see that our application and development fees are still grossly lagging behind over The expenses also budgeted at $11 million and are projected at $9.9. And how we are making this balance is by pausing most of the capital projects. Because this revenue did not come in from application and development fees, the money had to come from somewhere, and operating was not going to be it. So capital projects were paused.
If you don't mind, Mr. Chair, I'm going to ask some questions along the way because I was kind of, had some questions I want to ask, so.
Yeah, that's fine.
Just a couple of questions. How old are the water towers in Gloucester County?
I'm sorry?
How old are the water towers in Gloucester County?
I don't know the answer to that. George, do you know?
The newest one is the million gallon that was built in 1988. The other two were here before that, and I don't know the dates.
Are they potentially a project to replace those? Are they due for replacement? Are we concerned about that?
Not that I'm aware of. We have a maintenance contract, and so they are maintained every year, and that annual maintenance changes depending on how long it's been since we've done an internal cleanout versus an external one.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. So this is a list of the capital projects that were paused. Again, you have seen this, and most folks have heard me talk about all of these items. The water treatment plant motor control center that controls all of the pumps in the pump room, any additional SCADA improvements, this is over and above what we have planned for the ARPA funds, water line design and replacement, lead service line compliance funds, and pump station 11 and 13 collection system inspection and repairs. Those are consent order items. So the utilities fund balance, there is an unrestricted fund balance, which is just where the excess revenue over expenditures goes, and there is a development fund balance. Unrestricted fund balance, you can see at the beginning of this fiscal year was 1.64 million. I am anticipating using 1.612 million, leaving us a balance of $27,000. The FY25 budget assumed using 1.3 million of unrestricted fund balance, but with revenues not coming in, we not only had to pause capital projects, but we had to use additional fund balance just to cover operating costs. The development fund is funded strictly by development fees, and as a reminder, those fees are used for expansion of the system per code, but as deemed appropriate by the So the next couple of slides will be the capital projects. This looks rough, but we're not going to spend a lot of time on this one. This is the full 10-year plan. Projects haven't changed in here. You do have this in your hard copy packet, printed on one page per slide. So the projects in here have not changed since the last time you've seen it, and this slide will show you the projects just in the first five years. Those that are outlined in red are projects that might extend past the five years, just as an FYI. And the items in green, which is very difficult to see on this screen, so starting from Gloucester Street and Clements Avenue, water line replacement, all the way down to third from the bottom. Those projects are all water line replacement to address fire flow, age of pipes, the type of pipe, all of those projects that were identified in the master plan.
Pump stations across from like Route 14 and Ace, are they, and the old utilities, do they need to be replaced? Are they included in the pump station?
Yes, they are included.
They are included in that amount, so you intend to replace those in 2026? Or start work in 2026?
2026 is going to be more design work. So Pump Station 11, which is the one across from Horns Ace, right up here, that design work is mostly done, but that is about $1 million or so to actually upgrade.
So it's baked in the cake already?
Right. So, well, there's no funding for it at this point, but the design work has been done. Pump Station 13 and Pump Station 11 construction is included in the FY27 budget.
So the funding, I guess you would say, would be in FY20, like 3.8 and the $2 million here?
Yeah, it's totaled down at the bottom by fiscal year, so FY26 would be just over $2 million.
Okay. Thank you.
So, information on rates. Again, you've seen this slide before, a history on the rates for water and sewer charges. In 2012, the county paid for a rate study, and from that study, it was recommended to raise the rates 4% to 5% for two years, and then approximately 3% annually after that. Rates were increased 5% for two years and then stayed flat. So I've listed those rates there for you by water and by sewer, and you can see from 12, 13, and 14 how they changed, and those numbers in FY14 is where we currently stand. Just as a note, the sewer tiers were reduced in July of '24, and the equipment fee was implemented also in July of '24. This $2.50 a month, excuse me, this is why I brought water, I remembered from last time. So that charge covers the annual maintenance contract for the AMI meters. At the $2.50 a month mark, that should cover the contract amount for the next seven to eight years before that fee might have to be adjusted. So these next couple of slides are going to show you a breakdown by consumption and how many accounts. And you can see that there's a red box and there's a blue box, and you'll see this information throughout some of the next slides. This information comes from the FY24 actual billing and consumption data for every account in our system. I pulled this information and analyzed it and addressed any anomalies for leaks or anything like that.
Of the word leaks. So since, is the AMI system fully built out now in Gloucester County?
No, they started replacing meters the first week of February, so they can do about...
This February?
Yes.
Okay, we just started then.
Yeah, we just started.
Because the issue was, remember leakage, and we couldn't account for the leakage on the system?
Right.
Hopefully, this new system will then detect those leaks?
Yes, so they will detect leaks faster because right now, our staff only gets out there once a month. We also are part of a pilot program that will put zone scanning in 12 places within our own system to test for leaks, but by sound. So our water-only customers, you can see, 86% of our accounts are 5,000 gallons or less a month, and 95% of our accounts are 8,000 gallons a month or less. The 9 to 15 and the over 15, I have grouped and averaged because that starts to get really, really long and detailed, and this was easier. This was more about what affects most of the actual residential customers. For water and sewer, same thing. You'll see the red and the blue box. 80% of our water and sewer customers are in the 5,000 gallons or less, and 90% are 8,000 gallons or less.
So, I'm sorry.
You're fine.
I was reading through the material. So the current charges and the proposed upgraded charges for the budget coming up, do we have any comparison of what that revenue, what kind of revenue that will be relative to our costs?
Yes.
In this presentation?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm setting the stage for you.
She is.
Okay, so before I get into the actual details of the funding options, I will say the next several slides contain a lot of information, and it can get overwhelming, and I know that it was also overwhelming at the end of the retreat. But bear with me, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Davenport developed a model for us that was based on financials, so based on revenues and expenditures. They were very upfront with us about not being rate specialists. So some of the information that I had provided to you at the retreat, when I gave you some percentages, that was a percentage, as we delved more into the model, that was based on an overall revenue increase, not specific to rates. So as I go through these next slides, you'll start to see big changes because a 20% revenue increase does not equal a 20% rate increase. They are two different things. So I'll show you, I'll show you both. In order to capture the rate information, there is an entirely separate spreadsheet that I had to develop on the back end to get that right figure. So at the retreat, I showed you two options, solely cash funding, the entire capital project, or the entire capital plan, fully debt funding, and I've added a third one, which is a reduced debt funding. So cash fund only. So this slide is a little bit different than what you've seen before. This assumes utilizing only water and sewer rate changes to fully fund the capital plan, no growth in application and development fees, the natural system growth of 1% to 2%, which is our 10-year average, the annual expenditure growth of 5%, which is also our 10-year average. Rate increases will need to happen annually, and the reason these percentages are different is because I have targeted a fund balance of a quarter year's operating expense instead of a half. So you can see the revenue increase that is needed to cash fund the CIP, and then how that translates into a rate increase. So a 55% revenue increase in FY26 translates to a 76% rate increase. The reason that these percentages are so high in the beginning is because we have to have the cash upfront in order to be able to pay for the capital projects a few years down the road, and that is why those percentages decrease dramatically. So what does that look like? Here are the rates and what they would look like just for the next two years. These increases are almost three times the amount by year two. These increases are almost three times the amount by year two. So you might say, well, what does that mean to a customer? So this is broken into water only and water and sewer. Again, you can see the red box, which is the 5,000 gallons or less, and the blue box, 8,000 gallons or less. And you can see that a customer will see a substantial increase in their monthly bill. By year five, their rates will have increased over three times. Debt funding, so this one you also saw. This assumes borrowing for the full capital plan. No growth in application and development fees, the same natural system growth and expenditure growth, and targeting a fund balance of 50%. So industry standard is anywhere from 25% to 50%, which is why you've seen some, some variation in that. So those percentages up at the top, the 20, 10, 7, you have seen before. But now down at the bottom, how that translates into actual rates, 28%. There we go. So what that means for the rates, it's a little bit easier to swallow. What this means is by year two, rates will have increased about 45%. And again, what does that mean to the customer? You can see, again, red, blue box. By the end of year five, rates will have increased approximately 85%. So the third option that is new is what I'm calling a reduced debt funding. So this is borrowing for most of the capital plan. This assumes a 10% growth in development fund. The 10-year average of development fund is 23%. Keep in mind that some years, that could be a 250% increase over the year before, and then the year after it could be a negative. So this uses development fund balance and any excess cash for reduced borrowing by about $5.5 million. Still assuming the same growth in revenue and expenditures, but targeting a fund balance of 25%. So you can see the revenue needed is slightly less. And how that translates into rates, also slightly less. So what that actually looks like for the rates is by the end of year two, the rates will have increased by 28% over existing rates.
Is debt, I'm getting confused. Do these rates reflect a combination of borrowing and, and citizens paying the water, paying, paying for water? What percentage is that? How much is all that's going to cost at the end of the day?
This is all predicated on rates increasing and the users paying the bill for debt.
For the debt?
Yes. So it's reduced debt because if there's excess unrestricted fund balance, we would roll that in and borrow less the next year.
Again, this is like the third-
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, one more question. We're not, we're not expecting the tax, the real estate, the other taxpayers who are not on City Water to not pay, they're not going to see an increase in their real estate property taxes to help pay for this?
I probably should have led with that. I came into this entire presentation operating this as an enterprise fund. I have not developed any scenario that involves the real estate tax or anything like that. This is simply on the customers.
So, but you're not expecting the rate payers to fully fund this?
They are in this scenario.
All of them are going to pay for this?
Yes.
And again, if I can, Ms. Legg, the difference in your third option here is that you are spending the development money potentially different than normally?
So there's, there's a couple of things that are different here. One, it assumes an actual growth in development fund, a 10% growth. Whereas the other two options assumed no growth. That was done to be conservative in preparation for the retreat. Frankly, from a comfort level, going into a third fiscal year with a development that we were essentially banking on that has not happened yet. So this third option assumes that there is some growth to the development fund and using that. And then any excess cash over and above the 25% operating expenses funneled right back in to reduce the amount that we would have to borrow.
I know in the past, we've, we've gone round and round and had to make some accommodations to spend the development fund money. Is that, Mr. Wilmot, is that an ordinance? Or is that something we would have to change to, to, to make it easier for the utilities to do this? So that this potentially would work?
Yes, sir, it is an ordinance that restricts the utilization of the development fund to expansion of the system. You may modify that ordinance as you deem fit.
So also the use of this development fund balance goes specific to projects that I identified as development fund. So not just bottom line numbers. Let's see. So making sure I'm on the right page. So it's important to note that these rates in year one, should this be a direction that you want to go. So those rates in FY26 are actually lower than if we had raised rates 3% annually since 2014. Not by much, but a little. So at this point, I'm looking for questions, feedback, direction, so that we can continue to build a budget and potentially advertise a public hearing.
So basically, the only difference in scenario two and scenario three is that you have growth.
I'm sorry?
You have growth in scenario three versus scenario two for the reduced debt fund.
And the, the unrestricted fund balance is lower.
As a result of the growth?
No, 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 it's lower. What I, so what I had originally presented to you was half a year's operating expenses, which I see more often than not. But I have also seen a quarter years. So I built in the 25% for the third option.
Do you anticipate, this is just the, the users of, of the, of the, the water system and sewer system. Do you anticipate going to the non-users for additional revenues to, to fix this system that we have? Because last time you spoke to us, we've got really, with some real problems that we need to fix.
We, we have a lot of problems.
How do you anticipate, you're not going to intend for the users only to, to fund all of this?
The way that this is laid out, this is funded solely by the users. So now, you know, the, the board only adopts a budget one year at a time. And same with a rate increase. So this is predicated on essentially a 10-year plan of expenses, rate increases, maybe some growth.
So then the question is, will these rate increases fix the issues that you told us before?
Based on the model that Davenport built for us, it should.
It should, and you won't rely on non-users to help fund that?
Just when you go shopping.
Right, is that, is that what you're saying?
Right, yeah, I have nothing in here that is asking for general fund dollars or a tax increase.
So can we see the Davenport model, some summarized version of the Davenport model, see what it looks like?
Sure.
So that can, we can look at it, or I can look at it?
Yeah, we, we actually have it.
Okay.
Because you all had asked.
Something to play with, I mean, the spreadsheet or PDF version of it, so I can see it? That's fine, all I need is a PDF version of it.
Oh, yeah, okay.
But you, you say again that you, this is not intended for the non-users to fund this enterprise project?
Not separately than what they would pay if, you know, if they're frequenting a business who is on our system and their costs go up, but.
So if, if I can just clarify, oh, I'm so sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Thank you, Ms. Legg, for your presentation and for the breakdown of each of these options. It's really helpful to understand. I just had a follow-up question on the reduced debt funding option. You mentioned that you would use, this, this would incorporate 10, or anticipate a 10% growth in the development fund. Did you say that our average growth in the development fund is 23%?
Yes, the 10-year average.
So there are some highs and lows, but over the course of the, I guess, the past 10 years, it's been an average of 23%?
Yes, so-
So we're not maxing out our average, this is a conservative estimate?
Yes, and, and, and I mean, and I'll be honest, it still makes me a little nervous. Because we saw a significant boom with the building that was occurring right after COVID, when we started opening things back up. And that's a year that we saw, you know, a 200% increase in development fund. So yes, there are definitely highs and lows, and I don't feel that this maxes it out. But it didn't seem right at this point to just stick with zero.
Yes, sir.
So can I ask some other questions? So these are just overall questions from the, the overall condition of the plant. Didn't you mention that we needed a $1 million storage tank at the facility? A 2 million gallon system?
It's a, it's a 1 million gallon storage tank for $2 million.
And would that accommodate the need for firefighting, you think?
So really what that is, is because the way that the plant is designed, there is not a lot of holding capacity at the plant before it goes into the distribution system. So they're having to treat as they're pushing the water out into the system. Whereas having this storage capacity on site, they can hold treated water and then push it out.
And will that be able to accommodate any kind of firefighting needs?
Yeah, yeah.
If we'll be able to do that, okay. We still have galvanized pipe in our-
We do.
And, you know, because galvanized pipe contains lead in it.
So that is part of the EPA's lead and copper rule revision. So I've talked to you a couple of times about the lead service line inventory that we had to complete. We were required by the EPA to submit that in October of '24. So lines that we could identify, lines that we could not identify, we had to notify every property owner.
So, so most of those pipes, like, are there like cement? Like we talked, last time you spoke about cement, I just took these notes when you, I watched the video again, right? So you talked about asbestos, cement, cast iron, and lead soldering. We still have those kind of systems in our water treatment system?
So we do have asbestos concrete pipe.
Do we test for that to make sure they're not in there, any of those harmful chemicals are in there?
So there, as far as I know, asbestos concrete is more about the breakdown of the pipes. The galvanized are going to be required to be replaced by the EPA as the rule stands right now. That required replacement is supposed to start in FY27. We have not identified any lead lines at this time. We do have ductile iron, and of course, we have PVC.
So last time, the gentleman we had our meeting, last time he brought a bucket full of filters that were, I guess, I assume are brown, right? And those are brown from, from oxidation from iron, right? So do, do we have, is that going to, is that going to shorten the life of our reverse osmosis plant because of all the iron content in the water going in?
So that I don't know. I will say that that gentleman, and I, I think I've shared with you all, but for the, for the public's knowledge, I was first made aware of, of his concerns in January. We sent staff out there to look at the water. Had staff contact neighbors on the street. I sent staff out there again because I wanted absolute certainty that this was not on our side. We determined it was on our side because he does have galvanized. That service line is galvanized. So we are replacing it. Now we're just waiting for the weather. It's a three-day job.
Last one, I'll, I'll let other gentlemen want to speak. But the last question, one of the last questions I was having on the pumping stations, are there any kind of water intrusion issues going into the pumping stations from outside to in?
Yes, so that's part of-
We do have that problem.
That's part of the issue with Pump Station 11 is it's in a flood zone. And so we need to-
Is that affecting water quality, you think?
Well, it's a pump station, so it's sewer.
It's, oh, it's sewer, okay. I remember we were, well, so we were overhauling an old cruise liner. The potable water tanks and the sewer tanks were separated by a wall, and they were so rusty that the fecal matter was going into the drinking water. So I didn't know if that was, they're all separated, right? You're saying it's all completely separate?
Yes, they are. And so, and part of the capital fund in, in the, the first project, the pump station upgrades, that includes collection line upgrades. Because it was identified in the 2019 master plan that the collection lines for Pump Stations 11 and 13 needed to be addressed. And so that's in there.
And so the last question, are there any design issues that can impact the water quality that you are, you're seeing now that we can, we need to improve? Like, is there something in the design of the piping systems going in and out of the treatment plant that may affect water quality that you see or anything that you can identify?
No, nothing that I've heard.
Not seen anything like that?
Right now, the biggest push is the, the forever chemicals. You hear a lot about that right now. We are tested by, by the Virginia Department of Health and DEQ.
So you don't see any issues with pressure, any kind of fire flows or anything like that?
No, and-
From the current design? We don't have a design issue then? That's all I had. I sat there and watched the whole video of you talking last time.
So I, I wanted to address the idea of not incorporating general fund dollars into these proposals. When we met, Ms. Legg, you know, runs an enterprise system, that's her goal to do that. The board may choose to do something differently. That was something that was brought up at the retreat. I think on our side, we're concerned about the general fund increases that are needed and that this is not a, a time where there's a whole lot of money sitting around that could move over to utilities. The board, when you look at the, the full budget packet, you know, you all might decide to do something differently. But I agreed with bringing the idea of at least, can it be done completely on its own? Nobody holds a crystal ball. We don't know if the next subdivision rezoning is going to get approved or not. We don't know if the ones that have been approved are going to be built or not. I think that she's stated a very conservative, not a conservative growth plan because it would be unfair to say, we're not going to have any growth. Because we, we know there's going to be some. So adding those customers in obviously helps in the equation. When money is borrowed with these recommendations, so investments are going to be made, debt is going to have to be paid. If for some reason, the revenues are not coming in, all right? So this is projected to pay for itself, and I think it's, you know, these are, these are good figures. But hypothetically, the need for, or the desire to supplement the account could be done another year. In other words, starting it off that way may not be necessary. But five years from now, if the growth hasn't kept up, if there's other issues and utilities can't pay the debt for all the things that it's been fixing, at that point, the board could address because you don't want your enterprise system to fail. So I just didn't want you to think it's like a one-time only do we give money from general fund and you never have to look at that situation again. You'll probably look at it two or three times over the next 10 years. Thank you.
Ms. Legg, do you have the slides on page 18, 21, and 24 extended out the full 10 years?
Is that-
What the rates would be?
Is that this or this?
No, the other one. Same one, but go back a page, that one.
This one? Yes, I do. Would you like to see that?
Yes.
Yeah, I do.
All four of them, all three of them. Because I'm looking at it, if, the first scenario, well, that's, right now, you've got the second scenario on the sheet. It's page 20. Slide 21.
I don't have numbers.
I know, go back. That's fine, that's 18.
Okay, thank you. 21, got it.
Now we're all 21.
Only by threes.
You know, just the second year. Um, you know, just the second year, you're looking at the 5,000 gallon because that's where the averages are, where we were looking at to go from $50.18 to $72.58 per person on the, or the average number. What is that, 80, 90?
So, oh, so 86% of our customers are in that 5,000 gallons or less.
In '27, I see it three times greater than 27.
Yes.
From $50 all the way to 143?
No, that's on the fir, that's on page 18.
Oh, sorry, okay.
I'm still on 21.
Okay.
You're still on 21. And that's why I was saying, just for the first two years, it's going to jump from $50.18 to $72.58. And then if you look at the other scenario, go two, three, further.
Nope, sorry, wrong one.
And that's assuming growth.
Mm-hmm.
And using it, it still goes up to, from $50.18 for 5,000 to $64.65.
Mm-hmm.
And just keeping it, well, really, the number you need to go for 90, well, that's 86%. So let's just leave it there. I still think that we need to figure out a way, and I understand it's an enterprise zone, but to make it somewhat equitable, because everybody in the county is using the water in some form or fashion, we need to figure out a way that the, the people that are on water and sewer pay an increase, but the increase is also passed to everybody. It has to be done because there's no way it's going to, I mean, we need the, the 10-year spread because with this going up to, on the third scenario that you're looking at here, I'd like to know where it goes because we're looking at 14%, 13%, 11, 10, 8, 8, 8, 8, 8, 6, to where that actually would end up at year, fiscal year 35.
So you're saying, Chris, that we have to, the non-users have some skin in the game?
I think they need some.
I thought that, go ahead.
No, go ahead, Ken, go ahead, go ahead.
I thought our legal advice from Mr. Wilmot was that you could only assess a fee for those who were eligible for water and sewer and who are potential add-ons to the system.
You're, that's exactly what he said, but what I'm looking at is the people that are on the system pays an increase, and then everyone else is going to have to put some skin in the game.
Mr. Crisco?
I think, I think what Mr. Hudson's getting at is if in FY '26, we have to raise taxes, these folks then are going to have a increased water and sewer rate plus an increased tax. So they're going to be paying doubly for taxes, basically for the services that are provided by the county. And I think what Mr. Hudson is saying is we need to look at, is there a way to fairly inequitably do something to the non-users of this enterprise fund so that these folks don't get taxed twice?
Let's bring up my question. I asked that question three times, and you said, no, the non-users...
You're absolutely right. That, she said that it's not included, but where, where I'm going to disagree somewhat with you, Mr. Crisco, is I think that the users of the enterprise needs to pay more because they are utilizing the system. But all the citizens need to pay something into it. That's for, in addition, not just them, but if, if, if it's a one cent, a two cent, 10 cents, I know it's not going to be 10 cents, but everybody would pay that and the one cent. And then the citizens that are utilizing the water system are going to have an increased rate also. So they're going to get double taxed because based on legal counsel, we can't have a fund that just, if you're not on water, you have to pay something. Everybody would pay something, but the people that are using the waters, Department Utilities, are going to pay extra because of the increase in rate.
Mr. Crisco?
But then we get into, it's, it's, it's a tough scenario because then what do you do for the folks that live in this community that don't have kids going to school? How are we going to differentiate their, differentiate what they do? Because they're not using the service of public schools. We're not using, shoot, I haven't had a, I haven't been pulled over by the police in probably 20 years. So how do I, how do I, how do I justify paying for the police force because I'm not using that service? I mean, there, we gotta, I agree, we've got to figure something out, but at the end of the day, the, the rate users, unfortunately, I mean, everyone at this table pays a power bill. And if you look, there is a whole long list of things on your power bill that you pay because you're hooked up to Dominion Virginia Energy. And it's one of those things. I agree that there has to be something done. I, I would hate to see these people have rate increases, and then on top of that, you get the full brunt of a tax increase if there is one coming. There's, there's, right, but outside of funding for this, it's going to be funding for insurance increases, salary increases, and, and just the cost of operating. There, there's, it's going to be a challenge.
It is going to be a challenge, but I, but I think that if we were...
So, so just to help you when you're thinking about this, you, she gave you the best guesstimate of how we're going to go for 10 years. Obviously, as we go through, things cost more, we have to come back and ask for more. If they cost less, we can go back. She's done her best to show this is five years. I can't guarantee you that any of those water lines are going to last five years. I can't guarantee you anything on that list, because it's been ignored for more than 10 years, will last another five years. We're doing our best to do it in a way that it doesn't break the bank or hurt anybody. You may have to think about doing a rate increase and augmenting to get that capital fund rolling so we can get some of these things taken care of. Just a thought.
But I think that if we were to leave the rate increase, if we were to go with the first one, which is on page 18, which don't even try to find, where you wouldn't have to worry about any growth in the development fund because if the tax, if the utility rate for 5,000 gallons would jump from $50.18 in 2025 to $143 in 2027, there's going to be a lot of people digging wells illegally in this county and hooking up and paying the minimum. So, I mean, that one, I think is so far out of line, it's ridiculous. So if you look at the other two, they're closer, but you still have a considerable amount that the citizens are going to be paying each month higher than where they are now. And that's where I think some of it, because from the hospitals to everything else, we're used, we're, everyone in the county is utilizing it.
So if, if I may, just to play devil's advocate, you know, a business or whatnot will pass their fees on to customers. Their rising costs will be passed on to the customers, whether they are a water user or not. Whether or not this rate increase will substantially impact a large business like Walmart, I, you know, I don't know, from a, from a consumer standpoint. But you could argue that those costs are being passed on to potential non-users.
Car wash is a special one.
I, I will say, just for dollar-figure purposes, as the rates stand right now, 1% equals about $36,000 in additional revenue. And I believe one cent on the real estate tax is 5...
70, 570.
570.
570.
So if there were to be, just to make it easy, one cent would cover the rate increase.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
If I can, Mr. Chair, that's what I was going to say. If the majority of the board feels like that you want to look at that as an option, when I'm putting the budget together and working with Ms. Legg, it would be helpful to have that target. I know that there have been times we've asked for the board to consider a penny increase, and we were talking about it's, you know, $7 a month for a person, and that was looked at as too difficult and other priorities. And so there's going to be, I, I cannot imagine without the board making tremendous changes in the way that we do service that there would not be, that there will not be a tax increase coming. Because as you've already seen with the capital improvement request and the needs we have, we're looking at a tax increase there. So if, and, and I'm going to bring the budget as I was asked to a little differently than in the past with the board having to address more of the deficits, I guess, say. But if we still had a target, if the board said, let's, let's look at a penny, or let's look at two cents, or let's, then that can be built into the model, and all those things can be worked out. If, if you wanted nobody to pay more than a blank amount, you know, some sort of a target that could help us finish up to get to the budget process, that would be very, much appreciated.
So, Mr. Chair, go ahead, Mr. Crisco.
So, Ms. Legg, I know Mr. Hudson had asked for this chart to go out for the entire 10-year. My question is, and, you know, you had in here, we, we raised rates last in 2014.
Mm-hmm.
And I read, the reason I think this board quit raising rates is our water was some of the most expensive water in eastern Virginia. No rush, but can you let us know how expensive our water is these days?
Sure. The, the HR PDC actually puts out a report every year that compares all surrounding localities. I have the FY '24.
If you have 2024, see where the rates, proposed rates would put those.
Oh, okay.
So, as probably many of you know, I'm, I'm a tax-averse person, but only want to raise taxes only when it's absolutely necessary. Any tax policy we take should benefit the many and not just the few. So I noticed a lot of your capital projects include some park improvements. That only benefits the few. We need to make sure that we prioritize our revenues so that the many in Gloucester County benefit from the impact and not just the few.
Yes, Mr. Gibson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a, a couple of thoughts. I, I hear what Mr. Hudson and Mr. Crisco are saying about equitably sharing the burden for this much-needed upgrade to our utility system. My concern is, let's say hypothetically, we all agree that one cent will be devoted to the utility system, but that's in our general fund, and who's to say that if some other pressing need comes up, that money goes away to some other, some other need? We can't restrict that penny to these problems. And so I am more inclined, although I'm open, I'm open to that, but, but what I think Ms. Legg has presented is in kind of an insurance policy with a dedicated funding stream that we're not going to tinker with. And the reduced debt funding option looks like the best option to me. Obviously, any rate crease, increase is difficult for any consumer, and, and the unfortunate thing is the recommended rate increases from 2014 were not followed through on. And so there were two years of rate increases, and then it went flat. And so now we're in this position where our system's falling apart. And when I think about the massive drain on the budget when a pipe burst, and on the budget, on your employees, on the time away from what they're supposed to be doing, and so if we don't address this, it's just going to snowball. And I, I think we all have seen the dire circumstances out in California when fire hydrants didn't have water, and they couldn't fight the fires, and people's homes were burning down. And then in Richmond, where sheer incompetence led to no water for homes and businesses, and we don't want to have that in Gloucester County. And, and I think this proposal can help stem that tide. I mean, our basic, our basic needs are food, water, and shelter. We need water. And if we don't have this, we're, we're going to be in bad shape. So I, I am more inclined, although I'm, I'm open to other suggestions, but I'm more inclined to have a dedicated funding stream for these repairs, which to me is the reduced debt funding option that's been presented.
But, Mr. Gibson, if you're down in Guinea, or you're in Moreneck, or somewhere else that doesn't have water, but you've got a fire hydrant that's running there, do you not get water on your house? You're going to get water from the department, even if you're not paying for the water bill to fight your fire. So, I mean, to say that you're not, you're only going to use it for certain, the people that are going to pay it so they can build the fire hydrants and everything else, make sure everything's running, yet the people that aren't on the water are going to benefit from it if their house were to burn down. I think we'd be better off if, I know Mr. Wilmot said that we couldn't have an enterprise, a, a fund where people that weren't on water had to pay part of it. But I think as, have we set it up like the mosquito control districts and others, we have a utility district for the whole county. Can we do that, Mr. Wilmot?
You can devote some of your real estate tax to utilities.
But that, but, and have it set in there that it goes utility year after year?
That, that's what you decide every year and year. So you, you can't bind yourself, you can't bind yourself...
Exactly, because...
To, to say, for the next 10 years, we're going to devote one cent of your real estate tax to utilities. You should do that, but it, it's not bound.
But with the mosquito control districts, where it's certain districts, can we not set out a penny for the utility department?
It's an extra penny.
An extra penny?
It's an extra penny, and you can devote that, but you're not bound to it.
There's no way to bind it if it's the whole county's paying it?
Right.
This, this happened to us way back in the day when we raised the personal property...
For school buses.
For school buses. Well, I think we bought school buses for two years, and then we said, oops, we need that money for something else. It's just like the lottery in the public school system. I'm with, I'm in agreement with Mr. Gibson. I think what Ms. Legg has presented, there's only one option. All I was trying to say is we have to be mindful when we, with whichever option we, we, we go with, we have to be mindful of these folks that are on water and sewer, all 3,900 or 5,400 or so. If we do this, and then we raise taxes, those people are paying for county services at a higher rate than the folks, the 5,400 that are not on water or water and sewer. That's all I was trying to say.
Yes.
There are two options that I thought, as far as if the board wanted to use general fund. One is you create a line item, and every year, it would be looked at as to what the board wants to put into that. The other way, if you were really wanting to make sure that it was committing, is the county could acquire the debt for a particular project and do that separately. And so if the county goes in for a particular project for a certain amount, it's, it's on, it's part of our fund. It's our debt that's to the county, not to the utilities authority or account.
Which is where the reservoir sweats, reservoir set till it was paid off.
So that's a Davenport question. That is not a utilities question.
Yes, sir.
So I have a question. My question is this, because I know as, as we go through the process, there's going to be a lot of constituents come and ask us a lot of questions. And so one of the questions I already know I'm going to be asked is, if I'm on this system, right, rates go up, first thing I'm going to be asking, I know who's going to ask me, what am I getting for my money? Okay, so what's the, what's the, I know what the long answer is, but what is the, what is going to be, what is the short answer to, somebody said, well, rates are going up, you said rates are going up, and I'm going to have to pay more, and, but I just wanted to know what I'm getting. Now, I know what they're getting, but could you give me a simple explanation to use?
Sure. Rates are going up in order to fund much-needed repairs to the entire water and sewer system that in some places is 60-plus years old. And we want them to be able to turn on their faucet and get water and flush their toilet.
And not back up in their house, or not just sit there.
So, oh, go ahead.
So when we break this down, I mean, if we want to be realistic and fair so everybody's paying what they're using, are the pump station upgrades only being funded by the utility, by the sewer increases?
No.
Why not? Why not?
I can look at that.
Because, because you've got water people that aren't on sewer, but they're paying for sewer upgrades, yet we're having an issue with everybody not paying for upgrades to the whole utilities. But you've got a water-only, which is the majority
Mm-hmm.
Is not paying for what, it's 3,200 versus 1,900. So you've got 1,300 that are gonna be paying for sewer that they're not utilizing.
I could definitely look at that. I will say anecdotally, I don't believe our sewer collection revenue covers the cost of operating our sewer collection system as it exists right now. So those two funds are not broken out separately. I would have to look into it deeper for, just to be sure. But knowing the, the high-level dollar figures, I don't think that our sewer customers are paying for the cost of operating that system as it is.
So, so, so does HRSD have any capex responsibilities for their system?
So, yes. So they're responsible for their own force mains, and so the, you know, the, excuse me. The way that our system works is we essentially just collect it all and then send it into an HRSD force main, and then it goes across the river because they treated it in their facilities.
But their infrastructure, they don't, they're not responsible for their infrastructure?
No, they are. This, but we have our own sewer lines
Connecting to that.
And our own pump stations.
Got it.
And I, and I, so I'm leaning towards that, because when we left our retreat, I had a lot of heartburn as to what we were going to be doing and how we were going to do it. I do like this better. I'm, I'm not particularly in favor of passing the rate on to the rest of the citizens in the community that are not using the water or our sewage. Anybody else have anything? Is, nothing else? All right, we can move on.
So I, that's what I was thinking. I, I think we're gonna have to come back with an A and a B. And I, I think we could, you've given enough guidance probably to look at the value of a penny, however it was done. If it was $550,000, $580,000 a year equivalent in a debt payment, or if it was, you know, assuming that the line item would be around the same each year, you know, Katie can, Ms. Legg can put those figures in there together. I still, I think we, we're missing one board member. We have a mixed opinion, I think, here, and you haven't seen the operating budget increase. So I'm thinking we may just have to have a double...
We're gonna have to, we're gonna have to come back together anyway.
Right.
And discuss this. We can't make any decision on this tonight. So, I mean, we're gonna come back
I, I think...
And discuss it.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Yes, we need to come back and discuss again, but I think we need to have rate changes in a public hearing scheduled concurrently with our budget public hearings so that we can do this all at once instead of getting through the budget and then going back into this and doing it all again. We already have a public hearing and everything scheduled. I think it's in our best interest, because we're, we're gonna have to discuss this plenty, but I think we should have those on the same night so that we can get all of this done together.
That is, we're in front of Maria.
So this chart that you have up here, Ms. Legg?
Yes.
This represents the expenses, right?
Yes, those are the capital projects.
And so, and so you're, you're saying that the funding options we have with the rate increases will, will cover that $30 million at the end of the day?
Yes.
Okay.
Will cover the debt payments.
The debt payments?
Yes.
Yeah, the debt for that $30 million?
Yes.
And how long are you looking for debt?
Maria, do you remember, was it 25? 25.
So...
We didn't get into the details of what type of borrowing, did we? Revenue.
Revenue bonds. What's our, what's our bond rating?
We don't have a bond rating.
So roughly, just so everybody knows, over a third of this is for sewer. You've got 7,000, 7 million?
Quick math here.
7 million, 560, force main 25, 2.5 million. Pump station, another 2 million.
Generators.
So it's, it's well over a third that you're gonna have people that are just on water paying.
Mr. Wilmot?
Yes.
If we, I, I know in, in the past, we sort of gloss over the rate changes and stuff. We never really address them. Do we need to have a motion tonight to have the public hearing and a rate change, or is that already part of our budget process for these? Or we just always skip over it?
I had recommended at the retreat, and I thought you all had agreed, although I'd sit corrected, I think, that you were gonna have a, a, a public hearing in March to have a cross-the-board 10% increase effective April the 1st. That's what I thought you agreed to. I was told you didn't. I, you keep kicking the can down the road. 2014 was your last increase. To answer your question, yes, Mr. Crisco, you could have a motion to have a public hearing, to set up, to set a public hearing to consider a rate increase of blank percent. So 10%, 20%? You could do it now for the March meeting if we can meet the advert, we can't meet the advertising.
But we can't.
So now we kicked it down another month. So you could have it for the April meeting if you'd like. But 2014 was your last increase?
Right, but water was expensive. That's why we stopped.
Yes, sir.
So, Ms. Cronin, what's the earliest that we can have this public hearing with considerable rate changes?
So it would be the April meeting would be the, if you wanted to have it at a regular meeting? I was gonna say that you're gonna, when you have the joint meeting with the school board, you're gonna decide on your tax rates to set, you set your public hearing for the budget and the tax rates at that time. And that public hearing is in mid-April. So if you wanted to have it with the budget public hearing, you could, but it would, otherwise it would be the first meeting in April.
You might want to separate them so you don't have
Right.
A total show.
Right. An HRSD show? So, um...
I'll be at both.
I will make the motion that we have considered rate changes and have the public hearing at our first meeting in April.
A percentage?
10%.
10% across the board?
Because that's, that's, that's what's in the...
It's a 14%.
Oh, sorry, 14%.
14%.
Yes, 14.
I would look at the wrong chart line, because I don't have the beautiful colors on mine.
For the reduced debt funding 14%.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so the, the public hearing would be April for a 14% across-the-board water and sewer, a rate of increase effective when? May?
Sure.
May. Okay, good.
Your motion? You got a motion? Second. Ms. Steel?
Mr. Hudson?
No.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Bizani?
No.
Mr. Nakosha?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
I think that's all the direction I need for right now.
Thank you so much, Ms. Legg.
Thank you. Do you wanna, do you need, Trish, do you need me to take that down? Okay.
All right, moving on with our work session agenda. Item B, discussion of public comment submission methods. Ms. Steel?
I think I'm in the, the situation that Mr. Wilmot was saying, like, thinking one thing and something else happened at the retreat because, and I told Mr. Bizani that I thought that the board hadn't made a decision on public comments, but I was wrong, and the board had made that decision. So at, at the last meeting, though, it was brought up, there were some concerns from public comments that citizens were interested in maintaining the system that was put in place during the pandemic. As the board is aware, and I think the citizens are aware, there's still opportunity to email board members 24/7. And it was discussed at the retreat that if emails came in, that they would make sure that they could be distributed out to board members to read. The main difference that I think that was discussed at the retreat was that the opportunity to say it publicly versus the board being made aware of these comments. So we put this on the agenda again and to verify that the board wanted to maintain the policy that was supposed to be changed, or whether the board wants to reconsider the change that was put in place at the retreat.
The retreat change, remind...
The, the retreats stated that we were going to modify and not take, read emails in the meetings, that instead they would be emailed out to the board members if they came in that way versus already coming to you.
Mr. Chair, I, I'm in favor of having citizens write to this board because the concerns they're gonna have are not just to any individual board member, but for concerns that they have with the entire county's concerns that they might have. So I'm in favor of continuing what we've done. If there are form letters, we know what to do with those. We've already agreed on a process for that. But if, you know, citizens want to send in a letter, it should be read out loud to, so the public will know it. And, you know, if someone's got to complain about something, it'll probably apply to all of us sitting in this, in this horseshoe-shaped dais here. And so I think we should continue allowing citizens to voice their opinion publicly on television.
Mr. Gibson?
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I didn't really weigh in at the retreat because I was still mulling this over, but the more I thought about it, I think the beauty of our democratic system is the exchange of ideas and transparency, and so it's not only the exchange of our ideas, but also input from the public, which I think is critical. But I don't really, I, I think the public's ability to provide input is strengthened when their comments are read publicly before our body, where they can be heard by video and audio if they're not able to attend. I think it's also respectful of those who may have health problems who want to provide input but can't physically get here. So I, I think the situation where there, we're barraged with letters is pretty rare. It's usually one to three. I, I don't think that's an extensive burden on our time. So for those reasons, I, I think the current system should continue, and we should still receive comments from the public that are read at our meetings.
So are we saying only read, or what about the voicemails that are left that aren't heard?
Is the system broken?
You can't hear them when they're on the video.
Can't hear them on the video.
I, I honestly don't remember taking an action at the retreat on this. I know we had discussion because of the techno, technology difficulties that we have of playing those voicemails on the recording. I'm all for leaving the system that was in place, but we have to improve it. I don't think it's fair to Ms. Cronin to have to read these voicemails. We've gotta figure out a better way for those voice, not the voicemails, for the emails to be read aloud. I know that some of our other meetings that have those, they've had issues getting the comment read in time. I know there's a option that you can click to, to have things read, but I think if we're going to continue this, we need to fix the technology holes that we have so those things are broadcast more clearly over the recording. And I, I think there's gotta be a better way for those emails to be read, but they have to be put into the public record.
Yes, sir.
So, Ms. Cronin, you can use an Apple iPhone, I guess, on the dictation mode and play, if the, if the actual sound does not come across the television, you could put your, an iPhone or an Android phone with dictation mode on, and it will translate all that to some words, and you just massage it, and then you can read that. That might be a way to circumvent the glitch that we have with being able to hear voicemails coming through the system. I mean, is that, is that a possibility? I don't know. You're doing it, so, you know.
So certainly those of us that, that get the voicemails, we are able to listen to those voicemails ahead of time and transcribe and read them and go ahead and read them. The issue was playing the voicemail recordings in the system. I think, if I'm not mistaken, Joe might have to correct me, later Mr. Harris might have to correct me later. I believe it may be audible on the recording that's broadcast at a later, that you watch in the playback, but the live broadcast and what you're hearing here, it's difficult for the board members because I think the speakers are somewhere farther back. So we can certainly look at the technology and try to find a better way for the audio to be able to be heard by the board members that are sitting here, which is the goal. Failing that, we can transcribe that ahead of time. Our deadline is generally 4:30 to receive those, those recordings, so by the end of the business day, so that we have some time to transcribe those. We truthfully haven't been getting a lot of voicemails for the board. Now, I don't know for the Planning Commission when they've had the, the bigger meetings, if they've received voicemails more than they've received the submitted comments, but we can certainly look at the technology aspect.
They were mainly submitted comments, but the issue that, and this is where some of it came about, you had people submitting written and were also showing up to speak. And they would speak, and then they wanted it read. And you wouldn't do both. So that's, and that's where it was coming, that's where the, all the, a lot of this came from. And as long as we only read the emails that are coming in specifically for the meetings, right? Not the early ones you get in the morning.
The chair can regulate that by saying, "If you're here at the meeting and you want your email, you want to hear your email read, don't come up and don't say anything."
You're right, but they were, this one particular Planning Commission meeting, they were coming up, "Oh, here, read it." And then they would go back, and it was, it was a disaster. And then the reading that night wasn't the best either.
Okay, so where are we with this?
Read that as my vote. Or go back to one of those.
Go back to what, what? Is that something we need to vote? Did we vote on it at the retreat? We need to, need a motion and second? Mr. Wilmot, did we vote on it?
I think if you want to formalize your action, it would be appropriate, whether you had voted at it at the retreat or not, to have a motion and a second to accept public comment. I assume this is at both at public hearings and at regular meetings via email and recordings, and that those will be read into the record if that's what you're of a mind to do.
Okay.
Hi, Mike, a motion if you accept that. Second.
Okay. Motion and second? All in favor?
What's the question?
Oh, one more question? I'm sorry.
So until we, with voicemails coming in, are we gonna transcribe them and then be read by Ms. Cronin?
She says she's gonna look at the technology.
But in the meantime, if a voicemail comes in, you're gonna transcribe it and then read it to us? Because the ones here, and especially TC Walker, you can't hear any of them, so...
I will certainly make sure that I do that for the board members, and I'll talk with the Planning Commission clerk to make sure that that's happening for them as well while we work on a technology fix.
I assume this motion doesn't pertain to the Planning Commission, because they'll govern their themselves.
You're right. I'm sorry, Mr. Wilmot, they do tend to follow what the board does, but you're right.
But I don't think they have to.
Correct.
You're right.
Nor would I.
Is it possible to, going forward, that those emails and those recordings just be forwarded to us, so that we have those, instead of having to wait for the minutes?
Yes.
Any more questions? All in favor? Hi. Okay, moving on. Item C, Mr. Crisco, declaration of local emergency.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, with the impending weather coming in, I, as the Director of Emergency Management, along with the blessing from the board, would like to declare a local state of emergency. We'll start that tonight after we vote, if we, if it passes, and it will continue until we decide that we're out of imminent peril. Do I need to actually read this, Mr. Wilmot? My declaration or no?
No.
It's never really read before. Okay.
Move. Second.
Move in second? Any question? Any more question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
You're welcome, sir. Okay, supervising discussion, do you have any more discussion tonight? We have discussed that. Okay, we have no closing meeting, only one thing left.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.